Right. So let's call the select board, the Wyndham Select Board Meeting of June 7th, 2022. In order at 6:31 PM. First out of order business, I'd like to congratulate the Hamilton Wyndham Senior Graduates. It was a great baccalaureate and graduation ceremony on Saturday. So best of fortune to all those graduating seniors. And of course, a lot of that work comes from Superintendent Tracy and the whole team there. We'll hear from you in a little bit. All right, we'll start off and say that this is a recorded meeting. It's virtual and all votes will be by roll call. As usual, we'll have an opportunity for public comments. Steve, do we have anybody out there in the?
Gary, we need to do roll call attendance.
Oh, yes, roll call attendance. Yes. I saw you there, but let's go roll call attendance. Thank you, Diane.
You're welcome. Diane Bucos here.
Peter Clay is here.
Gary Cheeseman's here. So Catherine Tinsley as Recording Secretary has that, and we should be all in order now. Thank you. So Steve, anybody looking to?
I do not see anybody's hand up. No.
All right, very well. Then if we can switch to the slides perhaps, Michelle. And just checking, I believe, Mary Beth Ting, are you on?
I am, yes.
All right, we'll have you on here in a second.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michelle. If we can scroll down to the next. Well, in any case, Mary Beth Ting is next, and she'll give us a little brief on
Having technical difficulties.
That we might be encountering. So Mary Beth, you want to just go ahead?
I will. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you all. I had the opportunity to see Mr. Cheeseman out and about, and we were talking about some public health related things. So I will say that COVID remains an issue in our town, although we have been moved by the CDC from, oh, I'm sorry, I have my camera off. Sorry about that. We've been moved from high level of transmission according to CDC down to medium. And so what that means for most residents is to stay home and seek testing if they're feeling symptomatic. To for those in our community who are at higher risk for severe disease, to have encouraged to have a conversation with your healthcare provider about whether or not it's appropriate for you to be masking in public. And to seek vaccination, and that includes booster doses. And I will remind members of the public that we participate in the Greater KPM Community Collaborative for Vaccination for COVID-19. And so we continue to vaccinate each Wednesday afternoon between 3:30 and 6:00. The link for that is on the COVID-19 page of the Town of Wyndham webpage. And everyone above the age of five is now eligible for a booster dose. And so if you haven't received it, please do consider going out and getting your booster dose for vaccine. When I looked most recently, the most recent data we have from the state is from June the 2nd. And we definitely have segments of our population who are not fully vaccinated. And that means they haven't received their completed first two doses. And beyond that, we have members of our population who have not received their booster dose. The reason and the rationale for the booster dose is that with any vaccine, over time, the immune protection that the body has from receiving the vaccine wanes. And so the booster dose just gives a reminder to the body to continue to you know, sort of a refresher so that your body will recognize and fight against the invading pathogen, as it were, the viral illness. So that's COVID-19. I would, if there are any questions, feel free to reach out to me through the Board of Health or through my email directly. And that information is all on the town website. Or you can call the Board of Health at 978-468-5520, and the extension is four. Additional summer disease threats, I'm still receiving reports of influenza, which is terrible to think that here we are in June and still getting cases of influenza. So if you have flu-like illness, do reach out to your healthcare provider for testing and treatment. There is antiviral treatment available for influenza. And the other things on the horizon are tick-borne diseases. We are receiving reports of Lyme disease in our population. It's a little early yet for mosquito-borne illness, but not too early to be thinking about preventing breeding grounds for mosquitoes. So tires are a problem, standing water is a problem. So thinking about ways to drain any standing water on your property so that's not a reservoir for mosquitoes to breed and hatch and cause problems. Use of repellent as needed when you're out between dawn and dusk and those sorts of things. So that's sort of the announcements on summer disease threats. We're in a good place in terms of COVID allowing, the weather allowing us to be outside more. And I would encourage everybody to take advantage of socializing with friends, family, loved ones outside where risk is always lower. And I'm happy to entertain any questions that any members of the board would have.
Anything, Diane or Peter?
I do have a question. How is a tire a mosquito breeding ground? What do you mean by that?
You know, it's usually like supplies of old tires, but I suppose if you have, if you've ever used a tire swing, Diane, you know how after a rainstorm, there would be water and you'd like to tip the tire to get the water out. So there can be little pools of water. And so the, I forget what it's called, it's like the mosquito-borne illness prevention board. I forget what the title is, but they have actually run programs in our area to get rid of old tires. Because if they're stored up in, you know, a lot or something like that, that can present a problem in terms of breeding.
Do you mean the Northeast Mosquito?
That's what I mean. Yes. Northeast Mosquito Control Board, I think it's called. Thank you for throwing me a light.
Anything else? Well, thank you, Mary Beth, as always, and some good news there, but still the COVID threat's there. So people, please take care.
Thank you very much.
All right. Okay, next slide. I think Steve, you got some announcements. You're muted, Steve.
So here is the Board and Committee openings. We put this together that details the year term and the the how many openings are available. So yeah, shut the door. So you can submit, sorry, was that going through the other office? Can submit your interest in serving through the employer request Google form that was set up. You can see the website there and we're sending an email to the attention of the select board.
So we've got some volunteers in, but need plenty more. So folks, let's please submit your interest to any of these boards.
And here is, we have the rain barrels for purchase. So through the Great American Rain Barrel, we're offering them at a discounted rate, so typically about almost about $80. It's additionally, Wyndham is offering its residents a $40 coupon on top of that. We'll make the link here available on our website. And but all orders must be received by June 16th. This is an announcement for Flag Day, June 14th. Where you can bring your worn-out flags to Pingree Park. The Veterans Committee will dispose of the flag properly by burning it in a controlled way. If you cannot attend and you have a flag that needs to be retired, please bring it to Town Hall to Bill Wilson. He's the Chair of the Cemetery Commission.
And to you again, Steve, Town Administrator's update.
All right. Yeah, so on June 1st, we celebrated embracing the pride flag together. I was in attendance and also were celebrating the beginning of Pride Month. That was a great get-together and a great success. We learned, we just learned recently that the $250,000 that was set aside for the the school Cutler project cannot be accessed for the feasibility study. The money is still set aside, but the vote taken at Town Meeting needs to be amended to what is Town Meeting of 2020 to what is required by MSBA, which means that there could be a need for a special Town Meeting this year. You know, beyond that, I, you know, this is my second, almost third week in the seat. I've been consciously trying to work my way systematically through the building and spend at least an hour with every employee and, you know, just getting their what works, what doesn't, wish lists, things of that nature. As we kind of work up a job description for the open Assistant Administrator or Director of Special Projects, whatever the best job description is. That's all I have for updates.
All right, thank you. Any questions, Diane or Peter? No.
No, but it sounds like you've been doing one a lot, Steve. Thank you.
So Chair's report, more social activity. Like to thank the Veterans Committee and Dean Peterson for a great Memorial Day event. And then as Steve said, we had the One June Pride and then of course, the School Graduation. Saying more of that in a little bit. Anything from Diane or Peter on your member reports?
So I was going to review those awesome events as well, but just mentioned that coming up in town, we have on this Saturday, there's a Pride picnic down at the Patton Estate with a lot of local people. The Ferry Day at the Museum is another big thing that's happening the following week. And then after that, the WVIS Tuesday, Tuesday Fun Days, I'm not sure what they're called. I can't remember. Start the last week in June. So there's a lot of family fun happening in Wyndham coming up.
Peter, anything?
Sure, just in terms of the whole issue of water bans and everything else. I and Diane Dixon, who's on the Water Board, we had a session with our state senator, Bruce Tar, and he actually suggested that the atmosphere around this whole issue of water and especially water on the Ipswich River might be ripe for change. So Diana and I are meeting with Wayne and Aaron of the Ipswich Water Watershed Association. We're meeting with them tomorrow to talk about an action plan to try and fix this once and for all.
Sounds good. You're going to bring that to our next meeting on the 21st then, hopefully? You just muted.
I guess it depends on what happens tomorrow. But yeah, I'll give you an update. Absolutely.
Sounds good. All right, next slide, please, Michelle. And I think we'll get consent agenda. And Peter, you get to read this.
Motion, move to approve the Wyndham Select Board Meeting Open Session Minutes for 4/19/2022 0503/2022, 0513/2022, 0518/2022 Workshop.
A second.
Any comments? Great job, as always, Catherine Tinsley. Thank you. So roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes. So pass unanimous. All right. New business, given that Superintendent Tracy is a very busy man, like to move Superintendent Tracy up and we'll hear about possibility of a new school. Eric? You're muted there.
Thank you all. I wanted to take the opportunity to connect with the committee so that we could outline some of the things that I've talked with Tom Younger about over the past couple of months. And I get who just mentioned it, but there will be the reality of a school building project. We are, we are in what's called Module One. So essentially, we have applied for the last four years to be accepted by the state to be able to submit our project, and it has not been accepted by the state until this current year. And what happens is they invite you into what they call Module One, which is eligibility period. The, it doesn't guarantee you anything other than you're going through a vetting process. So this eligibility period started on May 2nd for us and will continue all the way to January 27, 2023. Each hoop, if you will, that we're forced to go through gives the MSBA, the Massachusetts School Building Authority, an idea of whether or not we're serious enough to pursue a project. There are a number of hoops. I think there are eight altogether. Starting with our initial compliance certification, which is a legal document, just saying we agree to being part of the process and submitting all of the information that the state is asking for. So we have already done that. We've met that deadline. And then 60 days from the May 2nd date, we also have to put together a school building committee. And the school building committee will be responsible for managing the project, basically, keeping everything on track, working with our project manager and really developing the parts and pieces as this project goes forward. There are a number of questionnaires and projections that they will ask us to do. Because we have requested to combine the Cutler School and the Winthrop School. We'll have to do an educational profile for both buildings. And that's really looking at what, what number of types of rooms we have, how we classify them, what type of use they have in each of the buildings. And then we'll do an online enrollment projection, and that'll just be looking at our data over time. Projections as enrollment moving forward, not, not looking backwards. They'll, they'll try to get us to project forward a little bit. And, and then we will finalize our enrollment projection in October. And then we need to put together maintenance and capital planning information and, and really take a vote on the initial monies needed for what they call Module Two, which is the feasibility study. In order to be invited into Module Two, you have, you can see on, on your screen, these are all the kind of the hoops that we have to jump through. The feasibility study requires us to have about $1 to $1.2 million on the table. As you heard earlier, Mr. Pulo said, there was, there was in FY 20, there was a $250,000 set aside for an anticipated Cutler project. We had to resubmit to the state to make sure that the language on the warrant was correct. It was deemed incorrect. It was actually, the correct language was not used back in FY 20. So we will definitely need a special meeting in October. I think a number of people have been talking, Joe Demolovitz and Tom Younger and I have met several times over it to try to coordinate the date so that we can put something together for this. And in that meeting, we would have to re-approve money that is currently sitting in an account, which means basically using the language required by the state for the warrant article, excuse me. And then we need to also look to approve approximately another million dollars that would be used for the initial feasibility study. That would, that would allow us to hire a project manager. If we get accepted into the project, it would allow us to begin that study process. So kind of in a nutshell, we're looking to build one school to take Cutler and Winthrop and combine them into one school. It's a pretty extensive project, take about five years to completion. Once, once we get through this part of the process, we'll probably have another four-ish years to go if we get accepted. So we can do all these steps, get to January 27th, submit everything on time. And then in March-ish, usually March, April, they decide who's going to be accepted into the feasibility period. Once we're accepted in the feasibility, that means we're definitively working with the MSBA on this project. And, and then, then there'll be a new set of requirements for us to meet. But these are the initial, what they call Module One eligibility period. There are hoops that we need to get through to show and demonstrate to the MSBA that we are serious, that our communities are involved and understand the process and that we can commit to the, to the whole process. And that's, that's an important piece of the puzzle for MSBA. And again, we could get to the end of this process and they could say, no, we don't think you're ready, for whatever reason they may deem. But I believe the communities are ready. I think the support is there. I just, it's just a matter of hitting each of these deadlines. And so far, we are on track. The second item, the school building committee, we will need a member of the select board from each community to be part of that building committee. And that's again, something Tom Younger and I talked about about a month ago. And that select board will, will consist of people from the school department, people from each of the towns, boards, and then some, some actually community people with some skill sets of either architecture or large building knowledge and understanding. So it's about, it ends up about between 20 and 25 people usually. And that will kind of launch the process, if you will. So I'm willing to take any questions if they are there.
Diane or Peter, questions?
As always, I have a question. So we have a special town meeting sometime in October, obviously before October 28th is what it seems like. And we have to revoke the money we already put aside, but you also said we have to vote another million and a half? Was that right? Or is that just?
It's about a million. I'm actually looking at current projects across the state to try and get an idea. The state doesn't tell you. They just, they just kind of say, here are the current projects that are going on. So I'm trying to find comparable projects. There is a comparable project in Swambska that, that will give us a good idea. And I talked to Superintendent over in Manchester Essex, they're doing another similar project. So we're looking at about between $1 and $1.2 million to cover those initial expenses. And again, the $2 million we already have, 2.5, excuse me, $250,000 is already set aside. So we're really looking at about $1 million.
Okay. And then, so we go through the whole process and worst-case scenario, they say, yeah, no. What do we do with that money we put aside? Is that? Do we spend that or that just goes back?
It would have to go back and then be re-appropriated if, if, so, so basically we could reapply again and go through this whole same process again. And then we actually have to go through with, with getting the funding as well the same way. And what I noticed is each year, the MSBA changes the language just a little bit in there, the way they want it worded for Town Meetings. So we just have to keep an eye on that. There was, there was never any language at all included back in FY 20. They just, they just said, yeah, we're going to put $250,000 aside for this project when it kind of, when it arises, but it just, it wasn't set aside correctly. So we just have to, we have to kind of correct that in the process.
And we also need to set aside more money. So that makes double sense to have a special.
Yeah, it would be, it would split the same way the appropriation splits. So if you look at that million dollars, it's about, you know, 66 to Hamilton, and the balance would go to Wyndham. So it's not 1 million for each community. It's, it's 1 million overall.
Perfect. Thank you.
Very well then. So what you need from the Wyndham Select Board is commitment to a fall special meeting, which I think Steve and Joe can coordinate. I think, I think they're looking at one October. And then we'll need probably at our next meeting on the 21st to designate one of the three of us to join the School Building Committee. We'll get that posted on the agenda. That sound good, Diane and Peter?
Yep.
Yep.
All right. Anything else for Superintendent Tracy?
No, I just want to, just so people know, the commitment to the building committee initially will be only a few meetings. And then as we get into the quote feasibility, then it becomes a monthly commitment.
And probably run for the entire cycle of the building structure, right?
Correct. Duration of the project, yes.
Certainly a commitment, but probably the most important one around right now, size-wise. All right. Well, thank you, Superintendent Tracy, for joining us tonight. And again, hey, that graduation and baccalaureate were super, the band and the.
Thank you. Thank you. The high school did a great job. Kids did a great job. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
All right. All right. Thank you. Michelle, let's go back to A then. All right. So Steve, I think you have an update for us on this particular application?
Yes, that's correct. So this, this particular application is, it is, it is not yet complete. So I think that the application for local licenses is a little premature. The, one of the key pieces that we're, would be looking to see is a certificate on inspection from our building inspector and fire chief. And at this point, 152 Main Street is completely gutted as of today. So you know, although, you know, we're reviewing the process, I believe Michelle reached out to the applicant today and let them know what we have, what we don't have. We have a checklist. But the, it looks like the big one is, you know, is the inspection from the building inspector when the project is done.
Hi, Mark Harris here and Maria Licaccos.
Hi, who are you?
With the property owners and proposers of the new business. What would be the, what would be the, the expected timeline for us in terms of when we would be able to get approved for this?
Well, it looks like a couple of the things that need to take place is that, you know, as I mentioned, the significance of inspection from the building inspector, the fire chief. So you'd have to, the project would have to be, you know, pretty much in its complete state. And additionally, it won proof of serve safe, off-premises alcohol training for all employees selling alcohol. So I believe those, those last two pieces would be, you know, towards the end of your project's timeline. I'm not sure what your project's timeline is.
We're probably looking at completing this space sometime around September.
Yeah. So that's, you know, probably right around when you're completing it is, you know, when the, the board could, you know, vote to, to take action.
So just to understand it fully, once the board votes to take action, how long would the period be from that point forward to when we were actually granted a license if approved?
I believe it's, it's the next day, but I would, I'll have to get back to on that. I don't have a definitive answer.
Is there any downtime between the board and what state approval is required as well? Or is it the same thing?
Again, I'll have to get back to you on that. I can, I certainly, I took a note down. I can arrange to give you a call tomorrow or email.
Okay, that'd be great. Okay, that'd be great.
So we have set up another meeting?
Would we have another meeting here at the board prior, prior to getting that approval?
I would expect that the board would await the town administrators. Checklist complete essentially that the inspections and everything and the trainings all done, then would come to us for the final okay.
Yeah, the challenge, of course, for us is that, you know, we're building this space out specifically for this use.
Right.
You know, and not and not having some sense of, you know, whether it's going to be approved or not. Puts us in a very difficult financial position because the space may not be built out. You know, in accordance for this type of business if we didn't know that going in.
Right.
You know, we would, we could just build a retail space and rent it out to a retail tenant. So we're making a full commitment financially. To this endeavor. Prior to getting approval, and that's kind of the awkward position we're being put in.
But that's. My understanding is that's the mandated state law sequence. You know, we got to have the final inspections before the select board can give the final approval.
So final inspections along with a certificate of occupancy as well?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and serve safe is regarding each employee that is to be employed there or?
Just selling alcohol.
Just selling alcohol, okay. Okay.
So so we should, we can't present tonight anything? Okay.
All right, great, thank you.
Thank you all, thank you much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so Diane, you're gonna get busy here. Because we have all the annual appointments. And. Let's do this. You know. I unless one of the three of us has some sort of objection, let's just work through the list. And Diana will just give us the motion. Peter, if you'll give us the second and then I'll call for the quick boat and we'll move on to next.
Would it be okay if we read down almost like a consent agenda, we read. Through, I can read through the appointments, if anyone has any concern or wants to discuss, we can pull it out in separate, otherwise we can do them all.
I believe so, so if you want to. While we do one page at a time.
Yeah, yeah, we'll do, we'll do the front page first, so. The following people are who we're planning on appointing. As the ADA coordinator, James R. Reynolds, animal control, Stephen B. Kavanaugh. Animal control indigenous, Stephen B. Kavanaugh. Building inspector, Richard Maloney, building inspector assistant, E. Peter Swindell. Burial agent Keith Carter, Cape In Veterans Association, William J. Wilson, the third. Constable David A. O'Leary. And Scott R. James, fence viewer, Richard Maloney, inspector of wires, Dennis Curran, inspector of wires assistant, Dave Keenan. Liquor agent, Jason Luca Tony. Lumber surveyor of and measure of wooden bark, Gay W. Roland. Metropolitan area planning council, Margaret Hoffman, oil burner inspector Jeffrey W. Baxter and parking clerk Jamie A. Colon. Is everybody okay with those people or anyone we should pull aside?
Think we're good.
Hearing none, I move to appoint the above read names as the. Above read positions for a term beginning July first, twenty twenty-two and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Peter Clay's seconds.
Any further comments? Otherwise, roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes. Right, next slide, please.
So the next people I think we're planning on appointing for plumbing and gas inspectors, Kevin Dash, plumbing and gas inspector assistant, David Perrine. Police matron, Michelle D. Prinsey, records access officer, Trudy Reed, town council, KP Law. Treasure collector, Belinda Young, tree warden and superintendent of mothwork, Winslow A. Mulry.
Any questions, Peter?
Nope.
So I move to appoint the above named people to the above named positions for a term beginning July first, twenty twenty-two and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Peter Clay's seconds.
Any further comments? Otherwise, roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes.
Congratulations, everybody, thank you.
Another year of work ahead, thank you for your work. All right, so item C is, as Tom Younger departed, he also went through the list of. Committees that were. No longer essentially functioning, so just to clean things up. You can have a discussion vote tonight to disband the following committees. Any questions from Peter, Diane, comments?
Nope.
All right.
So I moved to approve disbanding the town government study committee. TA screening committee, economic committee, one of connects committee and the three seventy-five anniversary committee.
Peter Clay's seconds.
Any further comments?
Quick question now that I read it, even though I thought about it before, the town government study committee, when it was originally. Appointed was a large committee and then had separate sections.
Yes.
So we had the town government study committee, three to five, but there were other sections, are we just gonna? They haven't really started anything.
Yeah, the other two sections never came to fruition.
Okay, so we're just gonna disband and if we decide to go back, we could do that, okay, sorry.
All right, no, it's good. All right, so we got the second in there, so roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes, thank you.
Those were great committees, those that did some work, thank you very much.
All right, so. We have three committees that the select board by bylaw have positions on. And now we know that there's. Going to be select board positions on both the master planning and the school building committee that we just heard about. So. But tonight, perhaps we can divvy up these three initial jobs. And open it up to Diane, Peter. Any preferences?
I I would love to do wish.
All right.
Unless somebody else would like it.
I'm up for affordable housing trust.
All right. The. I'm amiable to that, I would say going forward, though, we ought to rotate these around a bit so that we get. Good experience in each of the areas, so.
So I had a question on that, one of my questions was, so. The reason we're doing this liaisons up, because I couldn't understand why we were only liaisons to these three committees. But looking back, it's either in the charge or in the bylaws of those committees that a select board. Member sits on them, but what it didn't say is, do we sign up for our term or do we? Re, when we reorganize every year, do we reorganize the liaison committees as well?
Yeah, so you know, obviously, there could be a new person coming on after each election, so these. Liaison positions are for the current year.
Okay, so they're one year terms. Thank you.
So giving the volunteer statements. Are we happy with that, knowing that we got two other big ones to fill, probably at the next meeting?
You saw a question on the school board or the school. Building committee, that would be not just a one year thing, I would assume whoever. Decides or is interested in that program would be a long-term commitment?
Well, yes, so long as you're a select board, because it's designated select board position. And of course. I would anticipate that. You know, the future select boards composition would stick with the one that has already built up experience.
Correct.
On that, so and I see that. Probably the school building committee is going to be the the largest workload. And probably the master planning. Will be the second largest workload.
Can I just, Gary, can I ask a question?
Sure.
So at our next meeting, we're going to talk about the master planning and the. School committee. Or the building committee.
Yeah, so the school building committee, I believe from that slide, they need to have it in place by one July, so. We need a. Decision forum at the next meeting.
Can we?
Before that deadline.
Can we revisit? What we've just volunteered to do depending on. The outcome of that meeting, that discussion.
So let's, are we in accord that we'll just roll this? Three, three positions to a five position decision on the twenty first?
Yes, please.
Unless anybody or any of these committees looking for. One of our members right away, I know wish doesn't meet that often.
Yeah, so veterans committee is. Very well maintained and affordable housing trust, I think. Has. Wrapped up their previous efforts with Maple Woods there, but certainly starting in July, they'll need some. Assistance going forward, so I don't think two week change here is going to make any difference. Because next select board meeting two will be all the. Confirmations for volunteers for this various committees, so each of these probably have two or three open slots. Each that need to be filled, so it'll be a whole new team starting in July, so.
I think it makes sense to put this off till next week and include those other two liaison positions.
All right, very well. Then. If that's okay with Peter, we'll just roll to. Item E then. All right. Chief Kavanaugh is with us tonight for some very exciting news.
Thank you. It is with pleasure that I recommend the names of two firefighters for promotions within the Wyndham Fire Department. Upon completion of the recent interview process with Deputy Chief Baxter, Deputy Chief Sullivan and myself. The interview board has selected firefighter EMT, Denzel Berth and firefighter EMT. Anthony Nickus of the position of lieutenant. Both firefighters have demonstrated many qualities that will benefit the town of Wyndham in their new roles as lieutenants. I recommend their appointments as lieutenant. Effective July first, two thousand twenty-two.
Could you give us a little background on their efforts to date within the department?
They've each been on four to five years, they. You know, at the scenes and stuff, they they. Have no problem taking control of a situation, you know, that's why I highly recommend them for lieutenant. They'll also be taken, they're always. Here to respond, basically, they're, they're very good firefighters, they know their stuff, they. They train hard, they work hard and. That's why I'd like to see him as lieutenant.
Diana, Peter, comments?
No, sounds good.
So any specific training that they'll get as they pin on the lieutenant's position?
Yep, they can take some advanced officer classes through the Mass Fire Academy, which. They plan on taking advanced interior. Structure firefighting, which they will be taking. It's, there's a lot to it, so. And there, you get to learn.
All right. Very well then, motion then Diane?
Sure, I move to approve the promotion of Denzel Berth to lieutenant as recommended by Chief Kavanaugh, effective July first, twenty twenty-two.
Peter Clay's seconds.
And I move to approve the promotion of Anthony Nickus to lieutenant as recommended by Chief Kavanaugh, effective July first, twenty twenty-two.
Peter Clay's seconds.
All right, so on both motions, roll call vote if there's no further comment. Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes, so congratulations to soon to be Lieutenant's birth and Nickus.
Thank you very much.
All right, item F, we've heard from Superintendent Tracy. So item G, I think we have Chief De Napoli with us tonight.
Good evening, everybody. I am here just simply to request permission to accept a donation, we had a kind donation of a hundred dollars from. Miss Edith Craig of twenty-four Arbor Street in town, and so we're just looking to put that in the department's gift account for future use.
Very well. Any comments, Peter or Diane?
No, that sounds very nice.
Yep, so we certainly thank Mrs. Edith Craig. For the kind donation and I know Chief De Napoli was a good use in the police department. If we can have a motion then?
I move to approve the donation of a hundred dollars from Mrs. Edith Craig. Of twenty-four Arbor Street for any needs, the Wyndham Police Department. As determined by the chief of police.
Peter Clay's seconds.
Any further comments? Otherwise, roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes, thank you, Mrs. Craig.
Quick question, I think it's probably for Steve now, who who thanks someone for gifts such as this? Do we have a corresponding secretary?
You know, I don't know who who has done it in the past, but I can certainly take the lead on that and send her center of note, excuse me.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, chief. And item H. So Steve, why don't you, is Jamie on or Steve, you want to?
Oh, yeah, I can.
Background on this?
Yeah, I'll fill it in. So and over the budget process and then it's typically through through town meeting. This part-time finance assistant job was created for nineteen hours a week. It was, you know, it's currently being funded. In the FY twenty-three budget. It's essentially a position that will assist in the finance department, primarily assisting Jamie with. Tasks, you know, repetitive tasks such as account payable. And things of that nature, preparing the warrant. And so that she can free up some of her time and dedicate it or towards. You know, strategic finance. Harper funds, the cares reporting, you know, we're still working through. A number of things that are kind of building up on her plate, in addition to it's. You know, where there's only one accountant essentially. In town and they are responsible for, you know, essentially all financial transactions. I I believe it's very important that there's some sort of a backup. Established so that if that person moves on or. Whatever, there's, you know, there's somebody that knows. The accounting software and that can be to keep, you know, keep the AP going, bills getting paid, things of that nature as the town replaces. The account.
Questions, Peter?
I have no questions.
Diane?
All right, the accountant's not really going anywhere right now, though, right, Steve?
No, no.
Oh, not.
Okay, thank you.
Now's the time, now's the time to plan.
That's true, very true, good succession planning.
So we certainly know that Jamie's put in a lot of extra time over the past year plus. You know, even extending into weekends and so forth, and we thank her for that effort to. Get the books and so forth back up in order, but we've taken a close look at this through the. Fincom process of last year's budget, town meeting voted in, so I think Steve, we have a. Really nice. Job description here and it's been validated by both you and Jamie, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. So any, let me see, we need a motion then Diane?
I move to approve the finance assistant job description as written on. June seventh, twenty twenty-two.
Peter Clay's seconds.
Any further comments? Otherwise, roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes, so they'll get this out. And we'll advertise the job and hopefully shortly after one July, when we get the FY twenty-three money, we'll have. Some. Very needed assistance in the. Finance office down there. Right. Good news for Jamie. Hi. All right, so. We did some of these last week, this was oversight, so Steve, you want to just introduce this one?
Yeah, I believe we were not in receipt of her personnel form in time and it came up late. And so this is just one additional request on top of what was. Approved previously.
Questions?
I wish she was still on so I could give her heat about this because she just was on vacation. But.
Very well. All right, Diane, the motion?
I move to approve the vacation carrier, a request from Margaret Hoffman, with nineteen hours of vacation town, as requested.
Peter Clay's seconds.
Roll call vote, Peter? Roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes. All right. So I think that takes care of, uh, all the new business, other matters, uh, looking at the schedule, we have the, uh, June twenty-first select board meeting and one planned for July 5th, the first Tuesday there in, uh, July. Uh, we also have, uh, Juneteenth is actually gonna be marked on twenty June, the Monday evening, instead of on the weekend Sunday. So encourage people to come out for that. And, uh, at the twenty-first June, we will have at least, uh, uh, need to have the decision on the, uh, select board liaisons and, uh, membership on the five different, uh, committees. We'll do that. And also, uh, if people hurry up and get some volunteers in statements and applications, then we'll take a look and we'll try to get all the, uh, boards and committees filled on the twenty-first of June so that we can start off the new fiscal year as fully, uh, filled up committees as possible.
So, so Gary, just being new to this?
Yes.
So, so I should go back and look at that list of all the openings?
And then so, so, uh, there's the list of all the openings. Uh, people can apply, uh, either, uh, on the website or by letter to town hall. Uh, we will be part of the packet or even earlier will be provided, uh, to the three select board members, the list of names against the committees and, uh, we'll be free to, uh, call them up or whatever you want to, uh, do as far as interviews or, uh, you know, follow-ups on their applications. The, um, the online application has a good deal of information for us as always. And just reminder for those people that are on committees that are, you know, coming to the end of their term, they also need to apply to be, uh, reappointed. So, and I know that, uh, Tom had and now Steve has reaching out to the, uh, various chairman of the committees to try to round up volunteers or make sure that there are people that know that they need to reapply. And then, um,
Sorry. So do we do it? So there's a Facebook page, the wonderful town of Wyndham or something like that. Would we post all these positions out on that Facebook page?
On the, uh, on the town website and on the town Facebook page, we, you know, we would not go to the private, uh,
Okay.
Facebook, you know, wonderful world of Wyndham page. So we've been advertising this as much as we can and it's, you know, recurring thing every year. But we'd like to get the people in place, uh, for the one July, start the new fiscal year.
So if I could jump in for a second, so we can post it on our, the municipal Facebook. Um, but as personal people, if we follow Facebook, we can share it to other pages, including if you're a member of the wonderful world. So you can, you can, you can do it that way too.
Yeah. So people are quite welcome to pass on the informations. So.
Definitely.
But, but we were not officially posted to the, uh, non-Wyndham website. Right. So, um, yeah, and I would recommend that, uh, the three of us, uh, review, um, the charges to each of the committees, which I'm working on some revisions. We did the one tonight to, uh, well, tonight, the, uh, the open spacing rec committee is looking at, uh, their position of changing to, uh, one, two, three-year rotations instead of every year making the appointment. So we'll work on that as well and some of the other charges. So, uh, I was thinking too, out of the workshop, we, uh, both, all three of us took on some tasks. So while we plan to do a little update on, uh, where we stand, uh, on the twenty-first of June. Is that all right?
So if I could just ask Steve to have that, the policy sent to me. I said I was going to work on that and, uh, I would just need that sent to me so I could play with that.
Sounds good.
Will do.
Thank you.
And Peter, you got, uh, water and, uh, looking at, uh, some, uh, town-owned properties around town as well?
Yep. In fact, uh, Margaret has created a great spreadsheet that, uh, we can share. I think I, I need to share it with the planning board first.
All right. Very well. And we'll just get, uh, some update on the twenty-first of June. And, um, I think, uh, that probably concludes it for tonight. Any other dates that we missed, Diane?
I hear June fourteenth. You've been talking about.
It was in the announcement and then.
That sounds like a very interesting program.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Um, what do you think the other thing was? Oh, at the, when we do all the appointments, that'll include all the police and fire?
Well, we had Tom Younger. So police and fire, uh, apparently we, uh, have been doing extra work that's not needed. So police and firefighters, once appointed, are, uh, good to go until there's other personnel actions. So that was, um, from our.
They are. Cause we, when we appointed them or when we appointed them, it was from July 1st.
Yes.
Twenty twenty-one to June 30th, twenty twenty-two.
So we'll check once again, but you know, I think very authoritative source and Tom Younger says that once appointed, they're appointed.
I know the police, if you, if you accept a mass general law, I remember Tom Perkins always saying that we could change it to three years. So we don't have to do it every year. But if you don't have to do it more than even that much, that's, that would be a huge savings time.
So we'll ask Steve to check that one more time. But, uh, that was, my understanding is once appointed, they're appointed. All right. All right then. And the, uh, most, uh, welcome motion that comes from Peter?
I, I moved that we adjourn this meeting on Tuesday, June 7th at seven twenty-eight PM.
Wow, I second that. We are fast.
Yeah, we've got a lot, a lot of names done tonight. And that's thank you to, uh, Michelle and Steve that, uh, are organizing the, uh, these lists. I know Michelle has built an immense. Yeah, Michelle has, has created an immense spreadsheet with all these employees positions and next time for all the boards and committees so that we'll have a record that can roll from year to year, knowing who's where and who's doing what. So thank you, Michelle. All right. So I hear a second. Do I?
I think I seconded.
All right. Then, uh, roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes. So our meeting's adjourned at, uh, seven twenty-eight. Thank you very much for all that attended. And congratulations to our two new, uh, fire attendants as of one July. Thank you, Steve, Michelle and Catherine for your support on this meeting.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.